Call me to order the staff to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Brewer?
Here.
Trustee Carter?
Here.
Trustee Grant?
Here.
Trustee Tate?
Trustee Todd?
Here.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
I will entertain the motion to go into recess discussing federal state or matters. I will entertain the motion. Remove by trustee Tate, second by trustee Grant, any question? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Any other trustee motion to resume? Remove by trustee Brewer, second by trustee Grant.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes. Motion is carried. Out of number four, approval of minutes, I will entertain the motion to approve the minutes for committee meeting of January sixteenth, two thousand eighteen.
I move that we approve those minutes with one minute, and that would be on page two, under proposed changes to board and committee meeting schedule. The bullet point under there, clerk, there's a comma in an incorrect place, apologies if I catch this earlier. It's one comma six, and it should be one six comma. If everybody sees on page two there what I'm talking about, so it should be sixteen thousand, not one comma six thousand.
Sixteen thousand.
Right. So I move that we approve with that one correction.
Any other? Remove the motion. Remove by trustee Luhan, second by trustee Brewer, that the minutes for January sixteenth is approved, and that's very correct. Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Tate?
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I will accept the motion to approve the committee meeting for February sixth, two thousand eighteen. Remove by trustee Grant, second by trustee Todd, any question? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
And the motion is carried. I will accept the motion to approve the minutes for the regular board meeting of February twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion with one small correction and apologies again to the clerk because I had forgotten to make this minor adjustment on my comments that I earlier. On page four, at the top, very minor change, apologies, ma'am. With the roll call under the eyes, you have Tate, not Tates, so please add the yes. That's the only change.
Any other?
That's the only change.
Number four. I need a second. Second, remove by trustee Luhan, second by trustee Grant. With the necessary court corrections, any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is carried. I will accept the motion to approve the minutes for the committee meeting, March twentieth, two thousand eighteen. Remove by trustee Tate, I put Todd, second by trustee Brewer, any question? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
I'm staying.
Motion is carried. Out of number five, public comment. All questions and comments will be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter of his team, in the interest of our citizens, each speaker, without one or two minutes of speaking, but three minutes, and may not engage in debate, counter protest, or personal behavior. Please state your name when you come up.
My name is Linda Washington, and I am here tonight to address and talk about the ordinance that talks about social media and being on Facebook. I gave all of you a packet earlier, two pages with information showing off of Facebook that was downloaded, of information that was put up on the internet in regard to me and Renee Murphy Page that is non-existent, that is written by some people that's on your staff and that's around you, by their purchase, and nothing has been done about it. I am one of several residents that have come to talk to you about the ordinance that's constantly being disrespected as the law of the village by Joe Guzziwazi and those that are on those papers with him. So I am just really upset tonight that it's been four months of residents coming, commenting things off of Facebook, bringing it to you all so you don't have, the trustees cannot say, "Well, we don't know nothing about it." You have the proof in your hands, the dates and the time of the postings. You have all of that documentation, not just from people from other residents as well, and you continue to do nothing about it. Also, I want to talk about all of the violence that's going on in South Village, I know that you all sit to fear there's no violence going on out here. However, there are homes that's been involved, there was a shooting the other day over on Carroll that we don't know nothing about, it's residents. People that call on each other, afraid to let their children go outside and play in their front yards for fear of just not knowing what's going on. Whoever is doing the shooting, whoever is doing the robbing, have the person been apprehended? Should our residents be careful and keep their children in the house? It's a public safety crisis, but people don't feel safe. You all stay here that you don't know nothing about the crime that's going on, I make the difference with you. A man came here last week and said, "I live where it feels safe, letting my children go in my very own front yard." The grass is tall all over this village, all over the vacant homes. I personally came to the village hall and gave you all my address. Across the street, that grass is still up to the window, so I just cut that grass. They probably want to cut I live over there, but nevertheless, I came tonight to let you know this. One minute, you have a problem with people saying names of people that's in your family and that's on your staff, but if you put my name up on the internet and say my name and put my family's name up there, I'm gonna do the same thing to yours. So if you want respect from me, you gotta give it to me to get it from me, because I'm not respecting nobody, nobody that don't respect me. Whatever you do to me, that's exactly what I'm gonna do to you. So I'm letting you know tonight, again, that your people are right up on Facebook with my name, that this even being dated, if I should have put scriptures in the book bags, which is a direct violation of sacred church and school. You know, you got some really, I can't say what they are, but you've got some powerful people working with you. My name is Renee Richardson. Did you have something to respond to that?
I'm going to.
Okay, come on with it.
Go ahead, Ms. Richardson, go ahead.
No, I wanted her to respond.
Go ahead, Ms. Richardson.
I'm saying to everybody here, I am not political, one way or the other. But when you put my name on a Facebook page, Joe Guzziwazi, I'm looking at you, okay? I want you to know this and hear it from me.
I said before, we're not gonna be personal.
But wait a minute, when you put my name on Facebook, you want it to be personal?
I didn't put it just...
You did.
I don't know about anybody.
Okay, but Mayor, only thing I'm gonna say to you, and I'm gonna say this very nicely, because I have been controlling myself in the way that I have been. I can be ignorant, however you want to put it, or I can be up here with you. But when you come at me, you looking for what you looking for. I'm not scared of guns, bullets, or none of it. I have used it, done it, and will do it again. I'm just telling you, I don't want nobody putting me in no mess on Facebook with none of you. I don't know you. That's all they do. But if I did, I would say what I have to say to you direct, I'm saying it to you directly because you're laughing. That's right. I don't do that. I have never disrespected nobody here in this meeting at any time, and I'm not gonna be disrespected. I can handle me. He can lift me up, and he can tell you, I don't have a problem.
Now, I'm saying this, and I'm hopefully, I guess every week you guys come up and you think that I have that much control over any of these...
You do! You're the employer. Fire him, fire him!
We're not going to go back and forth.
Yeah, you're gonna fire him, scum of the earth.
That's what I'm coming up, that type of...
I'm not gonna disrespect him, because I don't want him disrespecting me, Mayor.
And as far as those threats, you got a whole room to go to, heard you say it.
You're right, you're so right. It's on video too, and yours...
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, boy.
If you're gonna continue to do that, I will ask you to leave.
Rose Katzen, it's been, how long have you been in, a year and a half, remember? Or less, a little less, a little more? And I'm still waiting for the bricks. Now, Miss Dorothy Lindsey, she bought four bricks, I bought one brick. Nobody knows where they are, when they'll be in. We either want our money in, back, or live in within the month. I'll give you one more month, and then I want my money back. And so does Dorothy. Dorothy says she's gonna be in the ground before her bricks. Thank you.
In regards to your bricks, ma'am, I have a talk today, and we're gonna send those out to an agency that's going to engrave them. They'll be back hopefully within a week, and as soon as we get them all back, we're gonna look for a time that we can get public works to actually go to them. But I was talking to someone today about that same thing.
I didn't hear it in a while. For a year, I'm sorry.
Okay, I understand that, but I'm just saying, I have...
Good luck. Yeah, I'm sure you get a black hair, it'll be the best thing we have.
Excuse me. If you don't want to be part of this meeting, please leave. But I will now ask you again to please respect those people that sit here. What you're doing is not, you're not respecting anybody else that's sitting here. So if you want to continue to do that, you can do it outside. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Pat Couch, and I approach the podium, I have something I'd like to show the trustees.
Sure.
Numerous times, I have stood up here and mentioned, this village's policy on dogs, vicious dogs, we have ordinances in place to handle such. We've had men or women attacked by this type of critter. This is a beautiful animal, but to see the collar that this dog has on, it's not a friendly neighborhood dog. It's a dog running at large. He is known to chase people. I have the same dog on video that I brought up to you some time back, chasing two people past my house, that they had to drop their belongings and run from this dog. This village is losing revenue because this dog has no license, no shots most likely. And back in April of oh-one, there was a vicious ordinance passed. That was the original one. In two thousand and ten, the committee amended the original after your own daughter's dog had an issue and was put down. I think you recall that issue. This dog ended up being shot by the police you adopted. In October of two thousand seventeen, an ordinance was passed, ordinance number seventeen dash zero two-two. Now, I don't know what you plan to do, because we have nobody to handle the dogs. The police can't put a dog, such as this, in the back of a squad car, because then they have to have the whole squad, fieldicated, air-raided, whatever they have to do, because it's not habitable for a prisoner, I believe. I may be wrong. We've had an individual who was, who is a resident of South Village, he was also a man in, I'm sorry, is it two hundred? Okay. He is, has a permit or a license that can handle this type of situation. They need to either be not taged, tranquilized, so that they can be handled by the police without having to put them in a squad car. But we need somebody, somewhere, to help these residents, the bail fam, the mail carriers, so that nobody is gonna get hurt. There are small children in my neighborhood, this dog was loose, running, and when it came after me and a friend of mine today, I've had enough.
Thank you so much, Ms. Couch. We were, I did not see a video that you played that you had, but I just saw the dog, and I'm sure the police officer saw the dog. And we're definitely gonna try to do something about having that dog running rampant out in the village, absolutely. It doesn't mean that we have to have a dog catcher, but if the dog is running rapidly, the ordinance does take, we have to take people over the dog. Yes, ma'am.
Judy Gannister, I think everybody that knows me knows that I have always been pro-South Village Police Department. The things that I saw on the internet and what our police officers are dealing with in the police station may be sick. I cannot believe that you received a car meant for the police department and had customized masks put in, but never thought about giving a chair. You got a brand-new chair in your office, why didn't you give the old one to the police department? There was nothing wrong with it. What they're sitting on is a disgrace. And somebody donated two chairs. And it's sad, you gave an employee who was here less than four months a raise that more than doubled her salary. But you never once thought about what those police officers are doing, what they're writing on, the trash, or what they're sitting on. It's sad, and it's disgusting, and it's unacceptable. Speaking of the raise, last week I asked whether there was a bonding or insurance for the new interim financial director, I didn't get an answer. I'd like an answer tonight, I'd like to know if her salary raised, raised up again. I'd like to know if she's getting the same amount of money that Mohan was getting after all these years, and her with no experience. I'd like to know how you handle that. I'd like to know how you can give people raises when you have other people working in such low standard cases, and it's bad. I also would like to comment on the police cars and the vests, and what I have to say about the police department, and I will never stop. I don't care where the mayor is, I don't care who the chief is, I will fight for our police till the day I die. And you can't stop me, nor can anybody else. It's about time that we see that some of the things that were promised during the campaign are being done. Everybody gets mad because people are saying things, but when you don't have the audacity to even tell us what's going on, how in the hell do you expect us to comment off-provably? Money's being spent that you never brought to the board, why? Why does it keep going that way?
The time is up. In regard to the car, it was never a police car, never even told that, I don't know where that came from.
Can I come back?
No, we're not gonna go back and forth. I never said that it was a police car, I never even commented that it was a police car. That was never even brought to the board, that was, I took a police car away from anybody, that was never stated. I don't know where that came from, I don't know who told you that information. As far as the chairs and the condition that's going on, I've already talked to the chief, we've already talked to him, we're gonna handle that. We were talking about doing that before, but it was important that we take care of the crime and other things that were actually going on. And we were gonna do that at a later date, so that hasn't been talked about between the end of the chief and the park. Whoever took the pictures have no idea, but, you know, I've seen that, it was like that for a minute, and we're gonna take care of that. I mean, it may not be done as fast as you'd like to have it done, but it will be taken care of. Do you really want to keep going back and forth to the audience, I mean, because I will ask you to leave, and that's gonna be my last time. So if we can't, you want to allow us to conduct the meeting, and we answer questions for everybody, please leave. We're trying to conduct business. And your last question is the particular position, it's interim position right now, and that's why nothing has been done, but it is interim. As soon as the board finds out, I'm sure the people in Congress will let you know, because I'll let the board know, because the board will be bowling on that position. Yes, ma'am.
Barbara Sterns, my question, I'm playing for the... I'd like to know when or if something will be done about all these big tree branches, in some cases, tree trunks that are laying in the street, so cars have to dodge them. I've almost been hit three times in the last three weeks by people going around them on their side of the street and coming on my side of the street. I do a lot of driving south of South Trail and west of Torres. You can drive right down Chappelle Avenue and see them out there, they've been out there for two months. There's gonna be an accident, especially with the way that these cars are driving forty to fifty miles an hour down these sidewalks. There's gonna be a child killed. I'm a little sensitive to it because I was in a horrific crash a couple months ago, so I'm very, I don't know, I guess I look for stuff now more than I did before, but three times I've had cars come on my side of the street to go around these branches. You can find them on Two Twenty-First, you can find them on Chappelle, they're around Yates, they're all over the place. My only other comment is that I think you owe a huge apology to your village clerk, to trustee Todd, and to trustee, or these, I'm sorry, Brewer, for the way you treated them last year. You don't have to like them, you can be mad at them, but when you're sitting up there as the so-called mayor, you need to act like a grown-up. You owe them an apology for the way you treated them, and you got a hell of a lot of work to sit there tonight and preach to these ladies about respect. I don't expect you to leave it anyway.
Well, if that's the case, I will tell you about the branch, because I did not know that they were out there for two months. I ride around all the time, I have not seen branches that have been out there for two months, however...
Well, then you have a big Chappelle and Yates.
However, ma'am, because we just kind of talked about the murder today. However, if that's the case, they will be picked up, I'm sure today, you may have, maybe you have the address, it'll be checked out.
It's all over that section.
Okay, well, we've had windstorms, so, I was just out the other day, so I'm just saying, I didn't see any branches that were in those streets, I'm not saying that they're not there. I'm not saying that the streets I went down, I didn't see, but I'm not saying that's not there, but I will look, and will, and if they're there, they will be taken care of.
They're there.
Bernie, do you have things? Well, I'm kind of jumping up here. Well, will she receive additional salary for assuming Mohan's duties? That's one of my questions. And have you purchased that sure we got, or whatever you call it, regarding the treasure? Because I kind of don't see any checks in balances. The other thing, if I'm not mistaken, the treasure is also the treasure of the police on? I would like to clarify if that's true, and if it is, are the checks and balances there? And this is kind of a comment regarding our trustee Grant, creating ordinance, ordinance... All the bills appear to infringe upon the powers of the trustees. And I don't understand why the trustees, well, more of the trustees, don't have a power to do that. Finally, I didn't check accounts payable early, but since you fired Mohan...
Due to budget cuts, I understand.
Will you, well, basically, how can you justify paying Stroud and Suckin the money that you're paying if you gotta do budget cuts? Just, stuff is just not balancing out, it's illogical. The fine question is this, that eight hundred, I forget how many thousand regarding that money that you received from the one point three million that you all are going to put aside or put, I forgot the term that you use. Shouldn't you be using it to make repairs, or let's do the fire hydrants, let's cut some cords, let's pick up... Let's pick up some trees? There's just so much stuff I have to think of that we can do, whether they manage their sick complaints, so they can be taken and possibly removed. That's my question.
As far as the Mohan case, I don't know where you got that information from, but that is wrong. So it wasn't nothing about consolidation, so...
It's a budget cut.
And third? There was nothing about anything stated about any budget cuts or any consolidation, anything of that nature. I don't know where that came from. So in as far as the treasure has resigned as the police pension, uh, not treasure, so that she no longer has that position.
As far as the trustees have a problem with the bail ordinances? Since I have to address this to you, maybe you can answer that. Can I speak?
We're not gonna go back. You want to talk to the president, I believe, if you like to, ma'am.
Sir, this is an open meeting. So I ask you a question to the trustees who are also supposed to be representing the village. They should have a voice, sir. They should have a voice. Well, I'm asking you can we use it?
Ma'am, are you through?
No.
Okay, we don't have...
I'm like putting the episode...
Your tag is up, ma'am.
Oh, yeah, that's why I forgot one.
Ma'am, this happened, this happened.
No, I know that, but I asked you this question, you didn't answer. This regarding with Suckin assuming Mohan's duties, is she going to receive an additional salary? That was one of the questions, sir. But I asked you that already.
As I prefaced at the beginning, I was not talking about personal-related items in open session. The board will know everything that I've done.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I have a lot of issues with this going on. I just wanted to ask... My name, Debbie Williams, former village clerk for the village of Salma. What I'm going to address today is open transparency. I just happened to go on a website today because I was looking for something. And I noticed that the ordinances and the minutes have not been updated since October of 2017. The accounts payable has not been updated until October seventeen. No, I'm sorry, 2016. The audits haven't been updated until 2016. Collector's reports haven't been updated until 2017. So I guess my questions are, who is working, operating your website? And why don't we have this vital information that for the last two administrations, people were coming up to this podium every day talking about it? Where's the open and transparent government? Where is this financial information, the minutes, the ordinances that we need? So my two questions that are to you are, who operates your website? When don't they update?
Is it?
Yes.
Okay. The website will be updated. And you're absolutely right, I saw that it hadn't been for a while, so I'm getting that done hopefully by the end of this week. And as far as the the different, if you call it minutes, they will be, starting to be put on the website. So the website has to be updated. Right now, I'm in transition with that, so I will make sure that, and I am going to be involved in it more, to make sure that we get those things, because you're absolutely right. I didn't see the updates on a lot of them in a while, but they are there, and the updates are available. And we will make sure that it gets out on the website like it's supposed to. Before I go any further, I just wanted to recognize our the, yes, the president of the school board, Tammy Jones. I just wanted to recognize, and also recognize the superintendent, Dr. Donald Link, who's in the back. I just want to recognize. They may not have, don't have to say it. I just wanted to recognize the lady. And also, I'm sorry, school board member, Sedahir.
Second year.
Second area of the school board. But she still is a school board member. Yes, ma'am?
Mireles Colado. I'm here again. I see Joe Wizwadi is still here. You and your board members have given an ordinance. I'm gonna keep coming up here until he's terminated. Though I know you're not gonna terminate him because I know you were made to make that position up for him. I know you'll probably have, probably have hell to pay at home if you terminate him. But he needs to be terminated. Again, he is harassing me. He's been in my reach profile. I'm getting bogus emails at work through my job. There are other things going on. Getting emails that people are putting negative information out there about me. Again, I have to keep going to my HR department to show them all this. I also wanted to say that the other day I saw a video where you talked about cancer coming into the village. But did you realize that within less than a year that you were in, we went straight into stage four of cancer? Do you know that? You're not doing what you should be doing, and neither are your board members. You're forward at Bible every time you tell them to Bible. And when the lawsuits come in, every one of them are gonna be in there. You as well. Because he should have been terminated. There's an ordinance. The ordinance clearly says he should not be doing that. And you're letting him get away with it, just as your four board members are. That's my comment.
Reports of officers. Mayor's report, I'll say mine last, except for one thing. We will be having the Corn and Dog Roast, which will be here September eighth, from twelve to five, right behind Building Hall. I'm still looking for volunteers to help with that, to make this event possible. Yes, all, sorry, yes, there's a sign, one seat in the back of the table for anyone that would like to volunteer to help make that happen. Next item, village clerk.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Village engineer, Mrs. Sarnet.
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding the 223rd Street Reconstruction Project, concrete work is almost complete. Public Works is working to repair a broken storm sewer that was discovered during the project. Public Works is also finishing water main replacements prior to impeding work. Been opening for the elevated tank riser replacement project has been scheduled for September eleventh during the board meeting. And finally, we will be surveying the I-394 water main replacement project area. Once the topography and utilities are determined, the design can progress any of the earliest. That's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Question. Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Sarnet. We discussed a situation with the Oslo Grant, and I do believe that trustee Zupant and trustee Todd indicated that it may, it may or may not be some kind of compensation for the Oslo group and the... But nobody really answered the question, so I was wondering, did we finish that subject or we're just not gonna address it, what's going on with that? Conversation is because the Oslo group, I mean, grant lost, and we'd like to know, you know, you guys got paid thirty or forty thousand dollars or something for the engineering work. So I think the question was asked, you know, was it worth it, gonna be compensated for something? Is it a modest engineer?
As I stated, there will be a check issued back, if it works for that project.
But the whole thirty-five or forty-five? But you didn't say how much?
No. I don't know what the amount is, but there'll be a check issued back.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. I like that. We look forward to that. Also, a couple weeks, well, I think it's a couple months ago, we asked for copies of the booklet for the 221st Street project, and you said you was gonna provide me with that information. I haven't gotten it yet.
I'm sorry, I don't recall what that was.
Well, it's supposed to be some information about the 221st Street project when they had the water main break, the resurfacing road.
The 223rd?
The 21st.
I'm sorry, I don't recall.
I'll fill it in, I'll show it to you. Thank you.
Fire Department Chief Al Sabre. I'm sorry, Finance Administration Interim Director, Ms. Beal.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report.
All right, chief.
Question. Mr. Mayor, I noticed on the finance administration is the title to this suffer's job is interim director. I'd like to know who approved that position? And what does interim director mean, and what is her duties?
Interim means interim. I mean, she's not a full-time, has not been voted on, has not been... I need someone to fill that position because I didn't have a person to fill that position. So that's what that is. And when it gets to that point, the board will know about it. They'll know if anything goes on, and it will be voted on. And it becomes a full-time position. Right now, it's an interim position.
So in the meantime, though, do we know how much salary she's getting? The only time has that been approved, or checking her salary somewhere?
She's gonna, well, if you're interim, uh, interim, you're gonna be getting the same salary that the person that was in that position.
What? Who was that approved?
That's interim.
What? So who was that approved?
Approved, what do you mean by approved, trusty? I was saying, we're talking about approved. If a person is doing that position for right now, then that's what he will pay until that's a position that's made full-time. Or full, as far as the board votes on. The board will vote, the board will find out if anything goes wrong.
Well, and I should ask, who approved the position of interim director? No one, no one.
That's not, she's not an officer. I didn't need the okay of the board to put a person interim position.
So we have no idea how much she's gonna get salary class. We don't have a position description. And how long is this gonna be? How long is this position gonna be? How long are you gonna keep her on?
She put it something like that.
How long is this situation gonna be?
I have no idea. It's interim. Interim means that it's gonna be interim until, until, like I stated. It's an interim position. That's a position that is sealed because lack of a person not being there.
Yeah, it'd be five, ten, twenty years, so, you know. Exactly. And for the reports, I was wondering when are we gonna start getting the agent report, the counts receivable in a fund transfer?
We did get it, that counts receivable. Agent report, if you was to ask, is there?
We generally get it through the email.
You generally don't, you don't. You usually ask the director for the agent report. We don't, you don't, I've never seen, every time I got one, I had to ask for it. Because it changes daily.
Mr. Mayor, I usually get it from the mayor. Also, the water fund balance, where would I get that information from? I mean, all this stuff...
Are you asking all of this under her report? Because this is...
I'm asking, where would we be supposed to get this stuff from? Every month, every paper, and we don't get this stuff everybody.
Did you come and ask the village hall? Did you come to the village hall and ask that? Why are you asking it now? What's the reason for asking it now?
Mr. Mayor, like you said, we're not...
I'm asking you a question. What's the reason? I don't have the information.
Okay, well, that's all you had to say. And I would like a copy of the agent report in the fund transfers. Also, the balance for the fund and the cash report. Now, I'll give you a little memo on that.
I don't need a memo. I'm not gonna get your, I would have your report, I don't need a memo.
So you don't need a memo, how do I get it?
As I stated, trustee, if you need the financial reports, where do you go?
Generally, I guess from...
For Mohan's not here.
Okay, so since Mohan's not here, where did I get them from?
From the interim financial director.
So would you, the interim, this suffer, would you mind emailing me that information to the mayor, please? I like this normally do. I would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Fire Department Chief Al Sabre.
Mayor and Board. Over the period from August the ninth through the twenty-third, Fire Department has run in twenty-eight calls, three fire alarms, six vehicle accidents, five ambulance assists, three CO calls, two auto-lays out of town, one electrical, three vehicle fires, one gas leak, and one illegal burn. Mayor and trustees, we have ordered ten sets of gear, pants, and coats to replace our vacant gear. The fund came out of our clothing allowance. One additional set has been ordered, which is paid out of our FEMA grant. Last week, Tuesday, the Fire Department participated in a multi-department training with Creek Township, Spader, Beecher, and University Park. They were out at the El, the old Elmore Way strike. All surrounding departments rely on each other regularly, and we trained with them. A lot of the firefighters we get appointed learn to work together. But their tools are also our tools. And one last thing, for the Corn and Dog Roast, if the weather permits, we might have a UConn helicopter coming out there this... That is my report.
Thank you.
Chief Sartre, I have a question. During the budget hearings, you indicated, I'm not saying this, but in general, you indicated we need some airbags or something that's supposed to be... Air tanks, yeah. And how many do we need?
Fifty new lots.
Fifteen?
Fifty.
Fifteen, okay.
Police Department Chief Robert Fucker, coming in by Robert from... Thank you, Mr. Mayor, trustees. The past two weeks, police has responded to ordinance, demand, calls for service, or any arrests. Case of interest on Sunday, August nineteenth, officers received a call of gunshot victim sixteen hundred block of Two Seventeenth Street. The victim was shot several times and was very uncooperative. Officers could not determine where the village shooting took place. Victim was taken to the hospital in critical but stable condition. Our investigators recalled that this matter is under investigation, and this evening I found out that we have a subject of interest that we are currently looking for. DEA National Prescription Drug Takeback Day. In April, we participated in DEA's fifteenth National Prescription Drug Takeback Day nationwide with close to six thousand sites across the country. Together with a record-setting amount of local, state, and federal partners, DEA collected and destroyed close to one million pounds, nearly four hundred and seventy-five tons of potentially dangerous, expired, unused, and unwanted prescription drugs, making it the most successful event in DEA history. This brings the total amount of prescription drugs collected by DEA since the fall of 2010 to nine million, nine hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and fourteen pounds, or four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two tons. Our next DEA Prescription Drug Takeback Day is gonna be Saturday, October twenty-seventh, at the police department. More information will follow. Coffee with a cop. Wednesday, October third, is National Coffee with a Cop Day. It's a day dedicated to encourage communication and positive interaction between law enforcement agencies and the public. The day began as part of National Community Policing Week in 2016, and now continues each year on the first Wednesday of October, furthering efforts nationwide to bridge the gap between the community and the law enforcement, local police departments. the community and the law enforcement, uh, local police departments. Coffee with a cop is a community policing at its core. The simple act of having a cup of coffee with the community members can be the first step in increasing trust and cooperation between the police and the people they serve, said former Cops Office Director Ronald L. Davis. More information about this to follow. Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Public Works Director Kevin Vogel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Several items here. Um, public works have been really busy lately. We've had a lot of emergencies going on. We have some existing leaks in our town right now that we're gonna be addressing probably mid-week of next week, once we're done with all the projects at two-hundred-and-twenty-third Street. Leaky B-box, two-twenty-fourth, or two-seventeen-twenty-four Peterson, nineteen-fifty, two-nineteenth Place Leaky B-box, seventeen-thirty-one, two-twenty-third Place, and then we have an emergency dig at two, uh, two-seventeen-fifty-five Clyde. These are just B-box digs, but they are leaks inactive, and the residents have called them in. Um, staff has also been very busy on the two-twenty-third Street improvements. Uh, part of the work that we started to, uh, get in front of for the roadwork ended up putting us in other jobs. Um, we had a break on two-two-two-one-three Carroll. The break ended up breaking again. We had to replace seventeen feet of water main. Uh, twenty-one-thirty, two-twenty-third Street, uh, we had fifteen feet of water main replaced. Uh, it broke again. We had another ten feet of water main. Eighteen-thirty-two, two-twenty-second Place Water Main Break, um, just a regular repair. That one we got off kind of easy with just a clamp. Uh, leak at nineteen-fifty-one, two-twenty-third Street. This is right on the corner of the Clyde and two-twenty-third Street. This is part of the road project also. Uh, we had a leaky valve. They could not pour the curb. We dug the valve, finding out the valve top iron was rotted. We ended up replacing two valves and a firefighter on that corner. Uh, twenty-one-fifty-three, two-twenty-third Street, uh, we had a break at that location, but that was repaired. Eighteen-thirty-five, two-hundred-and-twenty-third Street, that is the last section we just did on two-hundred-and-twenty-third Street. That one is currently under a board order. We did fifty-one feet of water main over there. Um, staff is moving back, which today they're over at Cornell, finishing the last section that we began with, um, after before all this, all this other stuff started. They were replacing roughly thirty-seven feet of ten-inch water main, reducing to six. They should have that done about now. Um, that made that road will be temporarily halfway closed down until the gravel's been put back and it's packed down and up. So all that's been pushing us off of some of our other jobs, and I understand residents have been sending notices out with their concerns, and I'll address some of those that's coming up here. Uh, we've also been during this process, we've had a few emergency, uh, air conditioning units go down at the Police Department. Uh, we've had a couple fan wars go down, a couple plumbing leaks. Those all have been addressed. They should all be working at this time. Um, we have repairs going on in our wellhouses. Uh, we have a roof, we had a roof pool come out. They found several, uh, locations on the roof, the shingles, the nails were poking through. Those are all being addressed under a temporary repair. Um, we will then get a repair quote for the whole roof to be replaced. Uh, emergency line, we had an emergency line. Uh, we had a line go out at well three. ComEd was called. It blew out underground, and we had to run our generator for eight hours. Uh, we currently have a call out to ComEd to find out about replacing that line from the, uh, service all the way to the, the pole. I'll have more information later. Um, the grass cutting in town, even with the hot weather here, it seems like the weeds are growing faster than grass, but it looks like the whole thing is bad, so they are continuing to cut. Our part-timers are out there, um, every day. We have a good crew this year, so they're doing a really good job helping us out. And again, due to the small branches in town, due to all these emergencies we've had, we have had some branches now. The residents are putting them in the roadway instead of even in the parkway. I understand they're frustrated, but there's not a lot we can do with the staff we have. We do not have anymore to do, do any more than what we have. So basically, at September's pickup, all the branches that are out now, and anybody who wants to cut or anybody kind of ate it under yard, they can place those out, and we will be starting, uh, the Tuesday, start the pickup of September. All branches have to be out by the ninth. Anything after that will not be picked up. It will be ticked. Um, just another reminder about the debris in the roadway. You drive around town, residents are cutting their grass into the roadway, throwing debris in the roadway. We have a lot of landscapers doing the same thing. It's the worst I've ever seen in town with that, with the landscapers. Uh, if you wanna understand why the grass is growing in the curb line, that's because people cut their grass into the street. That's why the grass grows in the curb line. There's no other reason for it. They're seeding the curb line. Also, uh, staff is doing his best. We have notices every day. We're, we have complaints, we have orders, and we have the hoof of park. We're doing our best to keep up with that. Um, the notices are being met, I think. Uh, we also have some concrete work that has been completed, uh, two-two-six-zero-nine Brookwood, curb sidewalk. There is some asphalt work that has to be completed over there. And two-seventeen-hundred Mark Collins Drive, there was an accident damaging the, the curb sidewalk and the technical wing that has been put back into place. Um, and several other jobs. We'll be moving into the stages of coach and to start those projects on concrete work. Um, the replacement of the customer service van, we've already gotten some general numbers on that. I'm just waiting for, uh, okay to either move forward or what are the next steps? And the final thing, which is a big complaint for residents also, um, and those notes that are coming in, street light complaints. We had a section of, uh, two-twenty-third Street, two-twenty-third Place, uh, roughly the seventeen-hundred block, the garden section of town, were about nine lights out over there. We have two poles that were knocked down in that section, and the last pole that was knocked down, it damaged a wire in the ground. That wire's been repaired. Um, if they notice over there, the lights are on, and they will be on twenty-four hours a day until the poles are replaced. And we also have to replace the main conductor, turns them all. It is currently thirty-two years old. So that ends my report.
Right.
Mr. Weller, trustee, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Uh, Mr. Weller, uh, last week, we talked about the status of the security plexiglass. Uh, can you give us update?
Remind me what, what it does, love.
Oh, you're gonna, they didn't give a message?
They weren't there. They're talking about the plexiglass at the front, uh, front desk. For the, for the, um, for the front desk.
Uh, more information at this time.
I mean, it's been a year. It's been, my, right, yeah. I mean, somebody's supposed to look onto it like a sweet, so I guess.
Is it still, basically?
Is it still on the...
Is it still on order?
Yeah, we have all the numbers. We're just, we're just waiting for some construction to be done, and then we'll move on if we can.
Okay, thank you.
Second Officer Belvedere, Director Joe Wiggler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the Gas and Wash Project has begun with mass excavation and foundation work that has started. Uh, Arb Carl, Arb Carlson, the general contractor, has been out performing site survey work, um, that's going on now. Um, tonight, the board has on the, uh, agenda for approval, the variance for school district one-sixty-eight for the signs at Wagner School. This is for their Blossoms Program, uh, that started. Um, the zoning board of appeals recommended approval of this variance, and also making that recommendation as well. Um, with that, I would ask that, as the village has done in the past, to waive the permit fees, um, if there's no amount of checks to that, um, for the sign, uh, permit for District one-sixty-eight. Um, in the past, the village has waived all permit fees for the school districts as well as the library. So if anyone does not object to that, I would go ahead and waive that. And that concludes my report.
Okay, our reports of trustees, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any comments? Public Service Committee, Rusty Verden, bro.
I have, uh, no report for the, uh, Public Service Committee. Have, I do have comment, um, the, um... According to, um, what you just heard from the mayor, there are most of the things here that the trustees are, we don't know half the thing that, uh, that's going on in the village. Nobody tells us anything. When we ask, we give a bunch of runaround about we can't get, uh, um, reports, or you have to come to your office and get your report, and it never gets your report. You know, we need to do better, and we need to be more respectful of each other. There's a thing called transparency that we need in order to do our work, and which we're not getting, okay? We need to be able to communicate to what's going on here in the village, and when we ask about stuff that's happened before, like this plexiglass, somebody should be able to tell us what's the status of what's going on. A lot of things are going on, and they don't tell us anything. Trustees don't know anything. So we might wanna, uh, do that, uh, address that issue a little better. Now, also, I'd like to, um, address the issue of the intern director, as you say. Uh, this position seemed to be just posted, and you're saying that it shouldn't have been brought before the board. Um, I, I have questions about that, and I also sent, uh, a memo to, um, both of the districts, because a lot of things are going on that we're not ready to, or that we don't have questions for. We have questions, but nobody wants to give us an actual answer about what's going on. So that's what I think the, um, attorney is supposed to be for, to clear up some of these things, because we ask questions, we just don't get any answers. So, uh, with that being said, I'd like to, um, address issue on, um, the, um, how much was paid for the, um, intern director? Who said the salary and who approved it? Even though you said it's not done, how long is that gonna go on? She could be working with us for the next five, actually fifteen years. We never know. We need to answer on how and when this stuff is gonna be, uh, addressed, uh, during the day. And also, um, we were never told that the finance director was fired. For some reason, we, we knew. Everybody knows from gossip. So it seems to me that if we wanna be open and transparent, we need to know what's going on here in the village. That's the end of my report.
I have one question. Who's we?
Well, I. And you should know too, residents.
I didn't ask you a question.
Well, I answered. I'm answering your question. They don't need to go back and forth. We're trying to be respectful.
I didn't ask you a question.
Okay, I, I clarify my question. I did.
Budget Finance Committee, Trustee Robert Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the Budget Finance Committee is not meeting in August. Well, we plan to meet in September, and we hope to get Gerald out so he can kind of go over, give us any recommendations on the surface and trade policy, which I'd like to bring to the board, uh, pretty soon. Uh, in regards to, I believe that, uh, Ms. Hopkins asked a question about the, during repairs, a part of the hundred thousand dollars from the cash reserve, and I believe that during our discussion on cash reserve, that, uh, I think you direct, you asked the finance, I mean, sorry, the department heads to give you like a list, uh, that come up with, and then we will kind of look over as a board to discuss what can and could not be done with the balance that we have left, uh, of the one point three million dollars. So it's something that we're not looking into, and just wanted to kind of make that point. That goes my word.
Thank you, trustee.
I have a question.
On your report?
Uh, yeah, yeah. I just wanted to say something. I couldn't hear you on, and you said you was, you had a list. I couldn't hear you. Can you speak up?
No, so, so last week, during the cash reserve discussion that we had, the mayor said that he asked the department heads to give him a list of repairs that they needed. And we will take that as a board, it's a discussion, and see what we can do with the balance of the one point three million dollars, what we can, what we can, uh, get done, could not get done.
Oh, okay.
How's it in the government relationship, trustee, you see today? Orness Review Committee, trustee Lynn Fatt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Orness Review Committee will meet tentatively right now, September tenth, six-thirty P.M. Um, I have several orders, because I'm going to be very before the board. I'm waiting for the interns to settle back, and I want to be hopeful to make sure they are correct. And that ends my report.
Public Safety Committee, trustee, where's the...
Our next committee meeting will be next Wednesday at six P.M. here in Rotunda. Hope to see everybody here then. And then, uh, so that ends my committee report. I do have a question, Mayor. Our official agenda, or I should say, our end of meetings for the year indicates that we do not have a committee meeting next week, so I just wanna double check that that is the case, that we're gonna stick to that calendar and not have a committee meeting next week.
Unless there's something special, we will adhere to the calendar. Unless there's a need for a special meeting, we will not adhere. I'm sorry, we will adhere to the, uh, the calendar, which means we will not have a meeting next week.
It was part of the calendar that was adopted at the beginning of the year.
Um, Community Outreach, trustee, Robert Potter. Mr. Mayor, I have a report for this week. Reports of committees and commissions. Mr. Andrew Farmer, Chairman of the South Village Advisory, Senior Advisory Council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and trustees. Our next meeting for the Senior Advisory Council, September thirteenth, and all are welcome. Uh, we have finalized our second trip, uh, for seniors to the Orleans Casino on Friday, September twenty-eighth, and that's gonna be from eight a.m. to three-thirty P.M. It costs thirty-five dollars, with a twenty-five dollar credit for moving in. We encourage the seniors to come out. We do have suppliers made, made up, and we, I get some back on the table for anyone who wants them. Also, we have a health fair come for the seniors on, uh, September twenty-seventh, from ten a.m. to two P.M. Also, the seniors are walking every morning, Monday through Friday in the park behind the village. Please meet us there at seven a.m., and we'll be walking for one hour. Uh, also on September, we got Lion Nasa with Miss Tina, coming every Tuesday, except for September eighteenth. And, uh, the charge for the cost is three dollars for each senior. And, uh, September eighteenth, we do have a comp yet, doing an informational seminar about free home assessments on how to save money on your electric bill, and that was started, you know. Also, our first day night, twenty-one, September, it's Friday, September seventh, and our next one is the twenty-first. Please come out, invite the seniors for gift lists and other games. And I have one that's not on your report. Uh, you know, Connecticut, we're seeing, so we'll be hosting, uh, Medicare sales meetings during the open season this year, October fifteenth through December seventh, and working forward to come on the days and the times. And that's all I have.
On September thirteenth, that's tomorrow, that's your next meeting. What's happening there?
Oh, sorry. Uh, five o'clock.
Thank you. Thank you so much. New business? Uh, I'm just intending a motion to approve a house payable dated eight-twenty-eight two thousand eighteen, for him at nineteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents. How late that a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, present a motion to remove the salary for the intern director, because we're, we don't know how much we're, she's supposed to be paid. Uh, there's no, um, indication of how much she's supposed to be paid during the, uh, pay period, and, uh, we're just not sure, uh, how much she's supposed to pay. So I'd like to make a motion to remove what salary till it's determined by now, how much is she supposed to be paying. And, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, I just have a question in general. Do we ask for, uh, two motions, or do we just do one? Was that to deal with stuff?
You have, you have to have a motion, uh, on the, uh, record. I told you what the, the job pays, but, okay, you have a motion.
You told us what the job pays.
I told you that she would be getting, would be paying this, uh, what Mohan would get, and she'll...
Uh, uh, it's a...
You don't own Mohan's house?
No, I don't own Mohan's house. We, we never did a copy of the salary.
Okay, well, that's it. My finance has...
How much?
It's public information.
There's a motion on the floor, that's it. There's a motion on the floor in a second for not paying the, uh, interim, uh, director her salary until such time that you, whatever. I don't know if you wanna find out, but there's a motion in the floor in a second. Any questions? Adam Clark.
Trustee Carter?
No.
Trustee Grant?
No.
Trustee Takes? Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
No.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Motion's lost. You think you have something else?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I also like to make a motion to, uh, delete the, uh, salary for Dr. Strata, uh, for... for this pay period. According to this council payable, she has a total of $4,900 and something dollars from this particular pay period. Last year's pay period, she, she earned $6,999.75. I think we need to talk about this. Something's a little ridiculous about this. We ask every week how much the, Dr. Stroud is being paid and it's never revealed how much she's being paid. It's a little ridiculous that she could sit here every two weeks on a part-time salary and get almost $7,000 and then the next week she gets another five. Trustee Zupan asked about this, trustee Todd asked about this, but yet nobody's ever asking about, you know, why is she getting all this money? There, and, and, plant is clever, Kevin. Somebody's getting paid too much money for this. You know? We don't, there's no place in South Village where somebody should be making that kind of money.
No way.
So I'm, I just asked for a motion. It's, it's a little ridiculous to me. Is she to give us an explanation of what part-time employee?
Just give a second.
Okay. Okay, excuse me, I'm, I'm on the floor. Don't interrupt me.
You cannot discuss until you know a second to the motion.
It's my floor.
No, it's not.
Okay, it's hour two, there's a motion on the floor.
So you need a second.
Trustee, you made a motion. You made a motion.
Okay.
I'm looking for a second. You made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It was moved by trustee Brewer, second, by trustee Todd, that the, I guess you recall that Dr. Flawed's invoices will not be paid.
No, I'm saying you need a salary. I'm saying invoices, I'm saying you need a salary.
She doesn't have a salary. She gets, she has it for, she's a, she's a doctor, she doesn't get a salary.
No, she doesn't, she's nothing.
I knew, I knew you were going to do that. I knew you were going to do that. Madam clerk, please.
Here's a question that I asked. I wanted to say something. The reason I do is because last week, or two weeks ago, we'll say, what we're looking at is, we voted on 17 hours per week. That's what this board voted on, and she's taking 17.45. And I gave you the information, and I think it needs to be looked at. That's why I want to see it removed until this gets looked into. Because no matter what we voted on, it's 17.45 and $6,000. Now, that's the information that Dr. Stroud gave you in her statement of work, but that's not what we voted on. And so I did give you the information, and that's why I'd like to see it removed.
Any other questions? Any other questions, Madam clerk, please.
Trustee Grant?
No.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
Baffle.
Trustee Zupan?
No.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
No. Motion failed. I'm looking for a call roll on the amount that I look for a motion for the amount of $319,152.79 for house payable dated 8/28/2018.
So.
It was moved by trustee, um, Grant, second by trustee Zupan. Any questions?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I got confused. What did you just say? Would you want 316 pounds?
I said, I said 319,152.79.
So we're going to give her more money? Is that what it's for?
Do you pick up your packet today or, I mean, this was revised.
We don't revise.
Never revised.
Your mind didn't in my package, but I.
Okay, well, that's the amount that, that's, that's all now.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
No.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Motion's carried. I have a number B, motion to approve the cash reserve policy. I'll let it say the motion. It was moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee Zupan. Any questions?
I just have a comment on this. A cash reserve would be wonderful if we have a lot of money, but we don't. And one of the things that was brought up last week is, I'd like to see what our department is needing before we go into a cash reserve, because there's a lot of things that are needed out here. We could use more police officers. We have public works, it's down person. There's a lot of things that is needed and has been needed. I'd love to see a cash reserve, but I believe that we need to put the needs of this village first and then whatever is left, start a cash reserve. But until we have a lot of money, it's just my personal opinion. I'd like to see what the department has, has had for needs.
As I said last week, trustee Todd did, he talked to the department head. And they will be submitting a list of things that they need. And we will be discussing that, as I said, to the board. I will be bringing it back once I get that list to the board to let them know what it is that they're looking for.
And in the meantime, you want to pass a policy with $808,000.
Go ahead, Linda.
I'd like to see the list. I realize what you said last week, but I'd first like to see it before you take $808,000 of this 1.3 million and stake it in reserve. That's my personal opinion.
Any other question?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, with this particular issue, I mean, I, we could just list the whole Canada, things that we need. I hope that trustee, this is a very good policy, trustee Grant. However, we, we need things like the mandatory manhole repair project. This costs $139,000, $391,000 in repairs for water main breaks and stuff like that. So, you know, as you go through and you say you want, you want to spend $808,000 for.
Not spent.
Uh, in reserve for stuff that's needed, why not need them? We can fix that stuff as we go along and it will be beneficial to all of us. Why are we holding on to stuff when we know we need stuff to be fixed? It's crazy.
So I know this is not the time for back and forth discussion. First of all, this is a motion on the floor, so it's not time for back and forth. So I will say, if we do spend money, $800,000, what happens when we have no money and we have to borrow again through the waterfront? How do we ever get out of that hole? That's all the harm brings to the board. We need some kind of reserve in place so that we are not in the same situation we were in the past. We just borrowed $550,000 from the bond from last, well, from this past spring. And how do we ever plan to get out of the hole without borrowing money, without lines of credit? We have to start somewhere.
Well, right, we can get out of hold, just pay stuff as we go along. You just can't spend every dime you get. You, you, you think about, you got an expense that's on the books right now for $191,000 for manhole. That's mandatory. Why would I put that in reserve when I know that's mandatory? That's something we have to do. So my, my thing is that, my thing is to this. And also in addition to that, we have $250,000. We still don't know where that waterfront is. So I'm just saying, all this money is walking up out of here and you want to sit and hold some money? When we have things that need to be fixed, it's, it's a little, it's a little crazy.
The rest of the department heads, they will entail all of their needs. And we've asked the board, vote on that, and we'll decide if it's fixed or not fixed with the land in mind. It's not like we're not fixing everything at all. We can't fix everything. But we will fix some things.
Okay, we, we, I mean, you guys are here all the time, like I said before, that before any money is spent, it's going to be voted on. But it's amazing how now, I mean, some people that did not like that land to be sold. There was a lot of controversy on selling that land, so a lot of controversy on bringing that business in. Now that it's here and it's going to be a fruit for the village, to help the village. Now everybody wants to know what the money, the money's going to be spent with the direction of the village. The money is not going into some false fund or somebody's whatever account. The money's going to be there. We're just allocating it so, you know, it can be used in case. As anyone knows that's been here for a while, we always run through a part of the year, but we don't get any money in. We have to borrow from somewhere. This is, hopefully, will stop some of that. But we're going back and forth on this, and there's a motion on the floor. Everybody had a chance to speak on it. I'll ask for a vote.
I have a comment first. I, it's my understanding, wait a minute, that we're supposed to have a floor and have discussion now. Maybe Margaret can chime in on that, on when we're supposed to, I thought we're supposed to talk on stuff twice, at least twice. But you said.
What else do you have to say, trustee?
I'm asking Margaret for your, you know, your guidance on this matter.
I asked you, what else do you have to say, trustee?
I'm asking Margaret for guidance on the matter.
On what matter?
That it can be discussed again.
Did you have, I asked you what else do you have to discuss?
Margaret, can you give me a guidance?
Margaret?
Yeah. The clerk. Village clerk, Margaret.
But I don't understand that. I said she didn't, you have another question, ask your question.
Village clerk, Margaret, can you give us some guidance on?
No, that's fine, because it's really.
Reserve. I'm sorry, you can carry on, right? Village clerk.
A reserve?
On the policy, policy on whether or not we could talk. Because the mayor has cut us off two weeks ago. So I would like for you to please give us some guidance on whether or not we, you know, how long.
Trustee, you have a floor, trustee. You have a floor.
So can you?
So therefore, if you have another question, please ask your question.
That's my question.
You have a question, please ask your question. Why are you asking, you have a clerk?
I'm asking.
You have another question, ask your question. When you need, when you need, ask your question.
I have to be recognized by the mayor before I can speak. That's protocol. I'm following protocol.
Do you have?
Trustee Bernice, he's giving you another opportunity to talk. Please talk.
Girl, I call a few, I think they take.
You're asking everybody. People are sitting here, hopefully, we're trying to hit up some business. This is not a, this is not a, a show. This is not a show. For somebody to have to sit down, we're trying to conduct that.
That's not right what you're doing there. That's not right.
I will ask you one more time, please.
Nobody else up there.
You don't ask.
So thank you, trustee Brewer.
We have one more, we have one more question. Ask your question, ma'am.
Okay, my question is, I'm asking the village clerk, village clerk, Margaret, on policy procedures, on asking a question I would like to ask again, how many times can we get to talk on a particular subject? Okay, so.
Mr. Mayor, may I answer her question?
The question's already been answered. I asked her, she, she wants to talk again, she can talk again. I said that three times. So what difference does it make? She can talk again. We have something else to say, trustee, please. People are waiting up, this is, you're playing the people now.
No, she's not.
You're not fun. Then ask your question.
Village clerk, I asked the question so he can. And the mayor keeps interrupting the questions.
That's it, you don't have anything else? You don't have anything else?
I have, I have.
You don't have anything else?
Please address the village clerk.
No, do you have anything else to say, trustee?
I will answer.
I'm interrupting you. I'm asking your question. I haven't said it for the last two minutes, do you have anything else to say?
Order, order.
Who, who?
Order, order.
Green.
Trustee, village clerk.
Look at it, green.
The mayor is, has a floor. He has not addressed my question. So I think he's in violation of open meeting now. I would want to answer the question. I'm like, the question, y'all, what we should be doing. I don't, that's no one right. This is better than Empire.
If you don't have another question, I'd like to move on. You did get to answer. You have another question, I'd like to move on. Thank you. I'll accept, I'll, um, accept the motion for I have a number B. Okay, would you please call, would you please call a roll?
Trustee Todd?
No.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Motion's carried. I have a number C, motion to accept the South Village zoning board's recommendation for the variance of the signage ordinance to accommodate Blossom program signage. I'll accept it. Moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee, um, Grant. Any questions? Madam clerk?
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Motion's carried. I'll accept the motion for adjournment.
I have a quick question. The last motion that was passed, was it passed about the removal of the permit fee, or the signage fees?
Okay, um, you did, did you want to?
Do we have to?
Okay, yes, you do.
Can you do it?
Um, okay, do you amend the, the motion?
I amend my motion to waive the permit fee.
Permit fee and the, yeah, I amend the permit fee. And you waive, and you waive for the fact.
Like, listen.
Okay, so the motion is, I'm sorry, the original motion and the other motion that was put in place is for the waive of the permit fees and signage fees. I'll press the call roll. No, they, they, they amended that, right. So they want to study and that the signage reasons for missing the.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Trustee Todd? Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
And you, trustee Carter?
Yes. Motion's carried. I'm going to attend a motion to adjourn. Okay, I need to say. Um, it was moved by trustee, um, Zupan, second by trustee Grant, all in favor. All right. Motion's carried. Thank you.